Welcome everyone to the November 30th, last day of November, everyone. The zoning board of adjustment meeting, I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. For those who would like to partake, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And this is the zoning board, could please state your name so we can record you as present?
George Taylor here.
Cheryl Huckins here.
George Taylor here.
I see Hardoff here, we have our zoning administrator, John Huckins, we have our legal representative Walter here for the town.
And we have the desk, who handles all things.
The town planner.
All things land use. Thank you. So before us tonight is our first special exception case 227, 221 GR 22 filed by the owners of the property. Because with a request of the applicant for a special exception from Article 4, Section 4.1.2, lot frontage for new driveway, but access from Stagecoach Road where the original access was from Parker Mountain Road, also known as Route 126 in the general residential zoning district. Do we have new materials?
We do, it was a request for that, just for the site penalty up changed, there's a wetland that you'll see at the beginning. Where the frontages, it just happens, it's under 3,000.
Where. Do we have a representative from Laurel Lane Properties here?
Very good.
Yeah, it's basically, yeah, the difference is that they're, from their residential line, it didn't, the.
Okay, so there's a chance.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a few items now, so that's most routine.
The other copies that I brought.
Are the exact duplicates of the smaller ones we're looking at? You could make them available to anyone else that's present that would like to review them, but I'm sure Ford, I speak for all of us when I say we're comfortable with the smaller versions. Okay.
I need to group in, I actually own my land now. What did I, I mean, basically, I'm.
I'm going to interrupt for one second, our council just reminded me of something. So typically, our zoning board consists of five members, we're short one tonight. You have the right as an applicant to wait, reschedule until there are five members present, or to have your decision made by the four that are seated. Very good, thank you.
I would like to be fifth.
As long as you understand that it takes three approving members to get to approve.
Basically, I can't wait. I mean, if I live, you know, house to house, like I pay my bills, if there's any delays, I can't.
Okay. But proceed.
Okay. Again, basically, you know, instead of 126, so we're going on Stagecoach Road. It's a real steep slope going up to the driveway, it was ledged there, so it fits in this 2 miles per hour, 55 plus. There's not as much sight of view on there as there is on Stagecoach Road, where it's on 30, like 30 miles an hour. And then it's more flatter to get into the driveway. And also, which I just recently found out, making it off of, um, stage, I mean, off of 126, we'd have to go over wetlands. But here, I'm just asking for a special exception, I'm not in the wetlands, just within that 50 foot set of bounds. So, thank you.
Questions?
Are you asking, are you getting two agents, one for the driveway and one for the wetlands?
No.
No, it's just.
He's going in front of the planning board for that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I just have a comment, it's, uh, yeah, good for you. I don't blame you, I would much rather go off Stagecoach Road, it makes more sense, so I implore this.
And both pieces of property are owned by you?
They are not.
They are not.
The other one is Laurel Lane, not, um, she's, so, I think you can see the Laurel Lane, whichever, there's two LLCs on Badwater Lane.
Does her deed indicate that you have right of access over that property?
It is, it is, and I brought my, I brought my deed to prove it. I got, it's already been, and we had some, you gave me the right.
This was done by a surveyor.
Oh, yes.
And he's saying you have a driveway, he's here 30 feet wide, so that's a fact.
Question?
We have a reading part five, justification for special.
Please.
Yes.
Read it into back there.
You want me to read it?
Yes.
It's in your application, if you need a copy, I can. Oops.
It's the five criteria you filled out for the reason to the grounds.
Page four. Your part five justification was.
Justification for variants.
Yeah.
So it will be part five.
Part five for justification for a special exception.
Yeah. So we have both that, all the rights, the planning, the proposed developments will result on account of the location of steel building structures, parking area or other accident plates. The emission of odor, smoke, gas, noise, flare, vibration or other pollutants. So no detriment to my houses because I'm not asking about driveway. It's not illegal, it's not, anything of that nature. Number two, no matter what will be caused to the public or adjacent property on account of potential fire, explosion or release of toxic materials not applicable. Three, no creation of a traffic safety hazard or substantial traffic congestion will result in a vicinity of the proposed development. Except, I mean, it will eliminate the potential safeties by watching the other, you know, by eating the other. Number four, not applicable, I need to read it. Now, number five, the proposed use will not result in the degradation of existing surface and groundwater quality standards. Nor will it have adverse effects on the natural functions of wetlands on the site that will result in the loss of significant habitant or controlled protection. For not having any adverse effects, this will be, there will be a covered added to get into the driveway. And there will be still fence put up along the boundaries of the wetlands, we're going to raise the driveway up and put lawn and seed down to prevent any erosion.
And I'll answer my question. Could I ask the size of the color market you're expecting to put in?
It's, uh, 18 inches, I believe.
Any other questions, comments or concerns from the board?
My question was, is, so I don't have that question in the room.
And seeing as there are no more questions, comments or concerns, is there any zoning board member that would like to make a motion in reference to the special exception?
I could open, Glenn and Chair have to open up public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone here to speak in opposition or make public comment to this special exception?
Can I ask a question?
You could.
He has frontage on a road, is he using that frontage for access, or is he using another road where he doesn't have?
He has, he has, he has the right to use either one based on his deed, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah.
But as long as he has deeded right of way over the other property, then he would be proposing one or the other.
To answer your question completely, he does not have frontage on the road, that's why he's here asking for a review of that special.
That's what.
Page 7441, or is that the frontage which provides the access to the property?
It's the reason for the special exception.
And you can override the table?
67441, he does have frontage and he, he has access directly to a class of a better road. So 67541 doesn't apply to this one either, because this lot was approved by a subdivision. So therefore, 67541 only applies to private roads or something that wasn't approved by the planning board, if you read it.
Good, good question. Okay, appreciate your feedback. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant a special exception, and my reasoning is 126, a very busy road, as he said, in my opinion, the less, the less curb cuts we have there, the better. The steep grade of this lot, I would consider 126 a safe driveway. Stagecoach Road is a much more mellow road, as he said, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, it's a little flatter, there's no impact wetland, it makes sense. And it makes sense and it's safer, so.
And we have made sure that we have sent notification to the others.
Yes, very good.
Okay, so I would second that motion. I'll take a roll call vote, if there are no other questions, comments or concerns.
All to the do.
Cheryl Huckins, I.
Before I say, I could vote, I want to say that with the handling of the end of the existing driveway with the roll of the scene. It's fantastic, that's very good.
Hardoff, I am given the fatal reasons we've experienced in this area over the past few months. I appreciate you taking a second look at what would be safe.
You had a seat mark about getting the driveway permit, and you still let your 96 apply. I think we should be prepared for proceedings.
Next for us is a case for appeal.
You should be able to.
Case 22465 GR 22 ZAB Appeal, where the owner, DE Air Industrial Supply, is requesting an appeal of administrative decisions under 15.1.2 Article 1, to appeal the code enforcement decision on Article 9, Section 9.5. Section 3, no structures are allowed in a wetland buffer. This is in reference to a location of Castle Rock on a point, I assume it's 0.15 acre lot. In the general residential zoning district, we should just update that on you. And who's here to speak on behalf of DE Air Industrial? You have this plan. Oh, you want to.
Um, we can always give him to him in our office, still if he's gone.
Yeah, I know, he said he had extras, so.
Yeah, you would have to. She can hear the case, but she has to accuse herself in my appeal because she's my wife.
Oh, I see.
I know, each, each board acts a little different, some boards have you go and sit in the audience just so that it's not.
You probably found to a board of exactly three members, because Mrs. Huckins accused herself from hearing this. Are you comfortable with that? Would you like to reschedule once you think more than you look pressing?
It doesn't matter, I feel comfortable myself, and I'd add, give more information to the board, I'd like to have a look at it, this one, before I start.
Well.
And I'm Daniel, yeah, I'm the president of DE Industrial Services, by all right.
Um, I, I'm going to take three minutes to review that material. You all set with the speaker?
Yes.
We all set, Mr. Ben?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
If you want to pause for a moment, Mr. Air, after review of your application, there was a discussion with our legal representation from the town. And it is certainly your right to proceed tonight, however, you're relying on 674.39, a statute that does not apply to this particular lot. And you have the right to have this reviewed by planning board first before approaching the ZBA with this material, would you like to share?
Yeah, I think we're mixing.
Am I mixing them up? Okay, go ahead.
The. Talking about the appeal first. That statute, 67439, only applies to lots that have been approved by the planning board. And from what I could find, subject to correction, you think it was approved by the planning board, but there's no recorded the plans that I was provided by the planning office when I asked today. There's no indication of planning board approvals, lots or subdivision.
Thank you for your opinion, because the town sold me the lots with conditions inside.
I'm sorry, the what?
Thank you for your opinion, we're going to court on this, matter what, I've had enough. I made a good faith, blew my head, that's your opinion, I respect it. But you're not a judge and jury, that's you, whatever you want, look all the books you want. Out of good faith, I would renew my permit and I would there. And it changed into a personal persecution, I feel, and individual, it was packed, they would not hear my side of the story. And then, if your opinion on 674, as the town proved, I, I don't have, have the, it's on the official approval, I don't have best in rights. So if you're admitting I don't invest in rights, the town sold me unapproved laws, that mean nothing. We're in a different can of worms here, so whatever you guys wanted to go for.
This board.
I don't care what it takes.
This board doesn't have any authority to, and is not bound by whatever the selectmen have done in the.
It doesn't matter, I'm appealing the code enforcement officer, I am appealing, I'm not, I'm not appealing the suckman, I'm not being a boy.
And my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you're in this appeal, the administrative appeal, you're relying on 67439, right?
On one of the things.
Okay.
But there's more depth to what you're.
Right, you know, my whole package is up.
So, so if there are other arguments that you want to make in appeal to Mr. Huckins' decision, that, that's fine, but just so we understand, 6749, in the first line says every subdivision flat approved by the planning. And so with this, this lot, this subdivision was not approved by the planning board, because before planning board rules. And so it's, according to the terms of this legislation, this statute doesn't apply.
Thank you, that's good enough to go. In my depth research, I spent a lot of money researching this, and obtained state permits, we reviewed every avenue itself. I took care of all thing, I hired, I got official things from previous select board, uh, previous planning board members who are, who was on the planning board back in the seventies, so this was great. It's recorded and stuff, and the town, people sold this multiple times, the town approved three houses up there and stuff, and it's illegal, that subdivision never existed. It's never been appealed.
I'm going to just, take us back, do a quick timeout reset here, can I have you please read your justification for appeal? Justification for appeal, and let's go through the steps of that, because it is now my understanding that you would not like to table this, you'd like to proceed.
Exactly.
Okay.
Did I misunderstand about who, you, sorry attorney, Walton. Did I misunderstand you, you said we don't have jurisdiction to, to, no, those didn't, I didn't say, did not say that.
Uh, he said on, okay, that's my power. Say 67439, that the subdivision.
Which I, for a man.
Was paying taxes for years, that makes sense.
Okay.
So, so all my appeal, I can give you a standard vesting of ours, say 269, is from the municipal ality for review of itself. The last sentence, it says, the burden of you, from talking to the official comes at the questioning, from guidance enforcement, so. He knows at the time, you walked out of the room, vested is all speed, Jeffrey's tall, all this, and he has other staff members, say there's this, I had to go to the planning board. So I did call for special advice, and then, I think this is, is not a planning board issue, many other ones might be, my case right here, I believe should be in ZBA. This is about ordinance, zoning ordinance.
And the, the, the planning board of the ZBA, that's a different discussion, that's in the context.
You can say whatever you want, I don't care, Mr. You're only right to the dime, you're not a judge and jury, I'll take my chances.
Okay, okay. Let's, let's, as we're proceeding, let's do our best, I understand, anything involving you know, rights to your own property can, can bring up emotions.
No, no, I'm bad enough, I ain't bad enough.
I know.
I had a lot of persecutions from this town, and you know what, I'm gonna stop then.
Okay.
You can laugh, buddy.
But let's, let's do this, as we're moving through this request for the appeal.
Yes.
If you can state facts and history for us, that is most helpful, and if we can do it in a way that you're speaking as non emotionally charged as possible, it will help us.
As long as we're left.
It will help us digest the material.
All right, well, basically, out of good faith, I would renew my building permit.
Renew a building permit you already have.
I thought I had, and I was on 66 and 65 for a bond.
Okay.
I checked out the building inspector and stuff, and went over everything, and one of the rules, anything under acre, and that lot is 0.59 acres. Not 1.40 that earlier, I need to correct you on that.
0.59.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
So, no problem.
Yeah.
I researched all kinds of money on a survey and the research, to fix that problem, the town had it, at my own expense.
Okay.
So I contacted the surveyors up, and then I got an email showing, you did it. And I said, can we please be more formal, I'm not doing this, it's going to be sent to the town, it's sent to the town. Then I became sick, hospitalized. Through that, so they said there's no burden on your decisions, because I got sick, and it's shame on me. But I thought I did it, I went to renew it, so I come to find out there, and with my file, I went back there. Bring my surveyor, send it to me, and then me personally, I never followed through with it, but I thought I did it, so I went and renewed it. That's when I was informed.
That you've never had a permit?
Right, and he said I couldn't because the new ordinance went past.
Could you provide the board with timelines, please?
So, back in 1220, I obtained a separate permit for that law. I went to the board of selectmen for the road agreement, I got that done. I sat down with the building inspector, went over everything, but since it's under an acre, our rules, survey it, not a problem. So all I do is call him, survey it, he punched it right out, he had all the data and stuff.
Okay.
And this is a very intensive project, so, and it took a lot of my research. And I had to have all the issues there, restore this road, I rode at my own expense through the road association, and I have a letter sport with them in my package. Once that was done, and stuff, I, um, spaced it holidays, I wasn't talking at the time, and stuff, and then I became sick. So I get proof, I met all the criteria for 1220, and so, before any of these ever existed. But that, I don't know, as a bear or not, but I, I did all the right procedures, shame on me. And now I have to go through this and stuff, and I'm still having health problems, and right now, I don't care anymore, I'm sick of these games, I don't care what it costs me, I don't care what people's friends, I don't care to offend people.
What's, okay, so as I'm understanding it, you thought that you held a permit to build on the.
Yes, I go to all the right proper channels, follow the book.
Back in 122020.
Yeah. And then I went to renew my permits up, because I've been sick and stuff, just renewing stuff, and then that's when I was informed. It didn't exist, so I looked in there, so I went home and got my folders up, and I really laid it out there. And come to find out, I never followed through with it, and.
You put an application in for the permit, but you never got the permit?
I never finished it, because I needed that surveying, that, um.
Okay, okay. You have to actually chase down.
Right, the surveying, surveying me.
And only get the permit.
Right.
And then time to buy.
Yeah, I have a pocket for the scent, totally sending it down, and me.
I might be able to clarify this a little bit, you'll let me.
Um, I was actually going to ask the zoning administrator to speak in reference to this issue.
So Dan did come in, it was December 2020, um, he did apply for a permit, we found it after Dana left, and then I contacted Laura because he didn't follow the town's other attorney, so what happened is, he did apply for the permit, we ended up finding it after he left. But we were still waiting for him to bring in the selectmen's thing that was signed, which we never received. And her comment was, if you would have issued the permit then, it would have expired before this one here, before coming in now. And because of the zoning change, he was no longer exempt from the wetland buffers for being a lot pre 2001, so.
When did the zoning change?
This past March, this past March, it was a petition warrant article that changed the zoning.
Hold one second, please. Two members said, on the selected, this property was released and sent to auction. We are fully aware that they were requirements for the road to make this any temporary. And recollection by those two members may or may not coincide, and want to be as fair as possible with the applicant. Does that prior knowledge need to be discussed in a public setting?
Not, not really, I mean, in, in case you want to see this channel, selected expectation. The fact that they have a bomb in the same, is stiff.
Can I back you up and ask a question?
Miss Huckins has stated that I needed to bring the, well, I went to the selectman to get the road agreement, I need to hand it in. I never done that past other problems, that's, that's faster.
So I can understand you, say that one more time.
He's proceeded, I never brought in the road agreement.
Okay.
Too.
Yeah.
But I never did that in the past, and I thought staff handled all that, once you go in there in front of the.
Okay. Um, board members, anyone have questions, comments, concerns, go ahead.
I do, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
You talked about that co enforcement was looking for a document signed by the select, which was the.
Road.
Obviously, it wasn't.
I didn't notice the road.
And you eventually came up with that document.
No, that, I already did that, and that's, I believe that was staff, because I never did that before, the only thing I didn't have was, I did, I took a coffee, the, um, off plant. And drew all my setbacks, just so I met it, but he wouldn't accept it, so I have, you got all my, no, every place to send it in.
By a zoning, if it's less than an acre, you need a certified plot plan before I can give him a building permit, that's what he's talking about.
I understand that.
And, and when he went in to get, to ask for the permit in 20?
He went and got the plot plan after he came in and asked for the permit, but he did supply it.
Prior to March last year?
Prior to March, but what happened is, even if we would have issued the permit, his permit would have expired, is, I had a conversation with Laura, I wanted to make sure that I was on, she said it would have expired, so I'd. Is, I had a conversation with Laura. I wanted to make sure that I was on, she said it would have expired. So I'd be issuing a new permit. Where a building would be going in the buffer. So therefore zoning doesn't allow that because of the zoning change. So I could not issue him the permit. Unless he got relieved from the planning board with a nine point six to put his building in the buffer.
Yeah, so my, my.
I, I have two questions I need to answer.
Hang on one second. So, had the timing of this been different, this applicant would have had the permit approved?
Correct.
That's what I.
It's the zoning change that created it, the issue.
Justin.
Yeah, any, any more, Mr. Tippett?
I'm, I'm still trying to, to put this hopefully in perspective as far as. When he then applied for a willing permit in December twenty, you needed to provide some information for that permit. You went out and got the survey, which is what you need to provide. You got that before November twenty twenty-one. Which would have been the notice of the wetland setback, right?
I got, he supplied all that in December. The.
December twenty?
December of twenty.
Oh, the survey and everything.
Correct. So what happened is we were waiting for the thing to come back from the selectmen, but we were in that transition on the process to where Tiffany was handling it. Before they started doing the docu-sign thing because of the COVID. And because of that transfer on responsibilities, it kind of got lost in the shuffle. And before that, people would bring them in once they got the recording done to show it and I hand them the permit. Because of Dan being sick, this is the defense of Dan, because of Dan getting sick, he didn't follow through because he wasn't well enough to follow through. So there was no issue in trying to jump and get the permit going. So the whole thing sad. So if I would have issued it, and let's say January is what we said with Laura. So if I would have issued it and say in January, it would have expired after a year.
Because he got sick.
Right.
Even start because he got sick.
Right. So we'd have to come in and apply for a new permit because it had expired. And I have no authority to give him a permit. If the building's going to be in the wetland buffer because zoning doesn't allow it in the wetland buffer.
Yeah, that's.
So, that's why it is.
Very good. Go, go ahead, Mr. Aaron.
You two sit on the planning board, on the select board and stuff at the time.
That is correct.
It was done at public auction. Everything is over, everything was very. Parent on the conditions when you bid on that. Because there was an instance when we came back in, tried to appeal, the condition set forth on the properties. So, I don't have a problem with you two. It's, we go back and dig back where they happened. We did, so I put nothing wrong. So, I have a good faith and stuff. And I, if you want dogs or helps whatever, I put it for, through a health issue, I look for a continuous on the building permit. If I did have that building permit, although it's old, I decided I still get it continuous because of health reasons. The town that allows that.
Can you show me that in writing? I don't know if anything that we have that shows that.
You have that, given extensions on building permits.
I have been given extensions on building permits.
I'm gonna.
For, but you need to state a reason or that.
Usually.
Take control of this meeting again. Okay. So what we have before us is the understanding that you had that you had to enter the permit. The understanding that we were waiting on one piece of paper, but your understanding was that the town held the road agreement, correct?
Yes.
And that it was filed somewhere to be reviewed by the town. My understanding, you would have issued this permit, except somewhere in the process, the wetland buffer zoning change.
In the twenty twenty, or the twenty, early twenty twenty-one, I would have issued the permit. There's no doubt. He, he met all the qualifications.
That, that's helpful for me to understand the process.
Had this weapon setback been in effect?
No, because I am.
Okay.
You don't know why I invested.
So I was gonna say, would you have invested in the road improvement in order to?
Right, we never got in agreement.
Okay.
Selecting.
I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna keep it real.
Can I just make one, one more comment?
One other comment that I have heard and testified at this meeting was that we had interruption and transition as a town. In our processes as we were transferring to a more technologically forward capabilities. Is that the best way for me to maybe describe that? Go ahead.
Yeah. So if you look at the nine point six, which is the special permit that is, Dan meets every single one of those criteria. I think if he went to the planning board, um, because the nine, nine point six special permit or the three point four conditional use permit. Those have a different type of requirement than you have here. So you just read through them. If you answer yes to those questions, they have to grant him the permit.
Mm-hmm.
Dan meets yes on every single one of those permits. And like the last three questions is really about the quality of work and erosion control and all the other stuff. I seen Dan's work for years. Dan's very meticulous about making sure he has every single bit of those details. So there's, this, he can get a permit, but he needs the special permit that I can't give him. That's what the issue is.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Aaron.
Like I was saying, I don't care about your voters, but I believe my issue is here. Because all, if you look at my state permit, all these other laws affected by it. And I saw everything with my state permits and stuff, and there's the D's Charles out there.
Mm-hmm.
And let me tell you, things wash a lot of money. And they have grown in profit.
Okay. Make sure to.
Okay.
Explanation of it should be easier for us. Because if he wants to go forward.
Okay. Okay.
They have to give him the variance for this. And if he wants to go through it, I think you have to.
Okay. So I just want to ask one more time, Mr. Aaron, do you want to proceed in front of the planning board? Or do you want to continue in front of the zoning board to just?
Either whatever you want.
I need a yes or no?
No.
Okay.
I give her appeal.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, yeah, hey.
Would anyone like to make, any, anyone who is here to speak, um, in opposition to the appeal? Okay. Dean?
I'm about to say.
Well, let me just. I'm sorry.
I'm about in favor.
In, in favor of the appeal? You, you could certainly do that as well, sir. Sure.
I'll sit down. Nah, I'll pick the podium.
Pick the podium, please.
I made copies.
And this is in reference to.
Yeah. This, and if you get so far as wanting for a bear.
Sure.
I'm not gonna read.
We're talking right now just about the administrative appeal.
That's right.
Please.
Yeah. But my notes can be for the various as well.
Okay, very good.
And I'm just gonna dip my twenty-eight brains through. My, my information on this case is somewhat limited, but. Duncan references nine five, you mean, the provisions within any required wetland property.
And chair.
Yes.
We're asking this gentleman to speak in favor.
Yes.
And I believe this is making a form of a case for us. I mean, that he's in favor or he isn't. This information is nice to have, but I think that that should be a question to be put forward to our attorney.
Based on the.
Not, not to generate, to give us information for us to rule on.
So just so I'm clear, are you one of the others?
No.
You're not?
No.
Okay.
And this is just based on the.
You're giving testimony in support of something. Could you share with us your expertise in?
I was on the planning board.
Oh, okay.
For several years.
Okay. And in reference to this case from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, do you have any, um, specifically knowledge that you want to testify to in, in reference to?
Well, anywhere when the, when the town sold the lot.
Okay.
And I've seen studies.
Okay.
I've seen the work that's been done.
Um, I'm gonna ask you before you speak to allow us to just read through this. And then if there's further. You know, Mr. Aaron, if there's further testimony you feel you need to give that is not covered in here. Mr. Aaron.
I read that part of the meeting. It refers to Dan's law. I do not own them lots. DE Industrial Service and Blind Corporate owns them. The registered owners, I am a corporate president.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, anything else other than what you've given in written testimony that will enter into the minutes that you'd like to fairness to?
Well, yeah. I wasn't able to determine who approved the subdivision. Now. I've got a tax map from the eighties that shows the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
I suspect it was done probably by the select. I thought the planning board showed up around seventy-two.
This was recorded in nineteen seventy. It was back when you drew lines on a piece of paper and you recorded at the registry of deeds and we got the plan and that's what the attorney has.
Was it approved by the select?
No, it wasn't approved by anybody. It was just back before there was zoning.
Okay. Besides, I think you provided a reasonable opinion on these recordings and such, and I mean, that don't weigh the.
Well.
Well, I wasn't able to determine, you know, who approved or what approved or whatever.
I, I.
That was just basing it on the information they had.
We have the plan. You can come in that news office and get it.
Um, anything else you'd like to testify for in reference to approval?
Well, just that article five, nine against one lots, doesn't mention the wetlands buffers.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't require them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, any other questions, comments, or concerns, or comments to the appeal? Go ahead.
Yeah, I read the purchase and sale agreement. He had turned into an agreement with select that states clearly.
Mm-hmm.
That if he brings the road up to buildable standards.
Mm-hmm.
That he will be issued a building permit.
Thank you.
That's in his purchase and sales agreement. That's the contract he went by when he bought this.
Yes.
If the select would have said, oh, wait, unless rules change between now and then, and then he's proved.
Is that correct?
That's not, to me, that is.
That is my recollection as well, sir.
It has no bearing on this. They promised him in this purchase and sales agreement that if he buys this land and brings that road up. Issued without substantial work to the road. They will not issue a building permit without substantial work to the road. And he did the work to the road.
Great.
Um, and then it goes on to say, the condition of Sabo Castle Rock Road was private. In need of repair, the cell conveys of properties subject to the condition that prior to the issuance of any building permits, et cetera. Et cetera, it was laid out below. He did it.
Hey, great.
Pulled up his end of the block.
Hey, great.
For that reason, I make a motion that we grant this variance. I would call it.
A administrative appeal.
Administrative appeal.
We're dealing with just the administrative.
Sales agreement and the agreement that he has with the selectmen at the time.
I would sack that motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, could I, any other questions, comments, or concerns, Mr. Barr?
Okay.
Any questions today?
Could I get a roll call vote beginning with Mr. Tippett?
Tippett, oh, I.
Hardicoff, I.
Could I get a clarification of that?
So.
Is that for all these lots out there, all exempt from the zoning change?
For this.
That's for this purchase and sale.
This particular, for this appeal.
For just this one lot?
No.
That's why I'm asking.
My last clarify.
For, for this.
Stated on my permit. I did all my.
He bought four lots out there.
The paper that you brought before us is for this lot. And we have just approved an appeal. For an administrative appeal exception or overturning for this one lot.
Well, I see it earlier.
I'm just, I'm gonna leave it there. That's what's been filed for us. We don't have a right to blanket four lots based on what's been filed.
All right, let's, can I add this? If you would have come back here and said, here's another lot in this purchase and sales agreement, and I'm gifted the same reason. I was.
Right, that's at my expense, like when I raised.
I understand, Mr. Aaron, I, based on what you filed, before this zoning board. We have the right to deal with this one lot and we have.
You did not just one lot, one building permit for one lot, not for all.
We have just provided.
I have applied for that.
Exactly. So we can't act on it.
And I'll have to deny the next one because it doesn't comply with zoning. I'll have to come back here.
That's what you're up against.
If I'm here, uh, I, I was.
Well, I, I have no choice but deny it because it doesn't apply with zoning.
Walk away because we're about to hear your variance case.
Actually, you just granted an exception, so he doesn't need a variance. You basically gave it to him. You just gave it to him.
Then let me, let me finish and add to this in record, please. So, based on the prior administrative appeal and the overturning of that appeal by the zoning board of adjustments. The request for variance two, two, four, six, five, GR twenty-two, ZBA variance by DE Air Industrial Service and Supply. Requested by the applicant for a variance for a wetland buffer area where the majority of the structure would be in the wetland buffer. On Castle Rock Road in the general residential zoning district is no longer required. And therefore, we will not be hearing that case tonight. Does the rest of the board agree with that decision?
Agreed.
Oh.
Roll call, please, beginning with Mr. Tippett.
Tippett, oh, I.
Very good.
And Hardicoff, I thank you all for your time in this matter.
So you closed up the first one. Now there's another vote that's closed up the second one.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
So now I can give you a building permit now because of their decision.
I'm gonna move on to an action item. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
You can, sir.
Is there any reason why the select board didn't merge some of those lots together to make them more?
It was considered at the time that the lots were put forward. And recommendations were made at the time by a, what's the name of the group? Land committee, anyone?
The Land Committee.
Uh, it wasn't, is it?
The House Committee?
No. So we have a group that, um, external to the select board makes recommendations. They're brought before the select board based on those recommendations. Um, the select board made decisions.
But they couldn't merge them anyway.
Yeah, since then, they've done it to almost all of them.
I, I, that, that would have been years ago.
Yeah, they've done, they've done some lately that were required to be merged.
They gave a recommendation based on that.
I I am.
No, no, they can do it because the town owns it and they merge it themselves before they.
Yes.
Can we move on?
Yes, moving on. Thank you.
That's different. When the town owned them, they can rig them because they own the lot. It's not.
It's an action item before us. Five of letting residents request to rehear the zoning board of adjustment um decision from September twenty first. To grant a variance and special exception to the following cases. Two thirty four twenty five dash one B twenty two variance. Owners T S B construction, two thirty four twenty five one D twenty two special exception, owner T S B construction.
And Chair, this is the same case that I accused myself of last time, so I'll.
Be gonna accuse yourself. Very good. Thank you. Um. Based on that. Questions? You know, I'm not comfortable that you'll, you've accused yourself and we won't include you on a roll call decision. Um, they based on, I don't see any new information. Is there any? Um, information or knowledge you have that will lead you to want to make a motion to rehear these cases? For me, no, I I remember this really well and I thought we made a very good decision on this. And Mr. Bailey.
I agree in the same way because I was going to ask you the same question. We have more information that would help help us. In changing our decisions if there isn't any information provided, so I say no.
So would anyone at this time like to make a motion to rehear those cases? By nodding of your head, I'm assuming that everyone is saying no, but um but I have a roll call with your decision. Would you like to rehear these cases?
Cheryl Hawkins, no.
George Bailey, no.
Tracy Hardikoff, no, we will not be rehearing those cases. Um, in reference to review and approval of minutes before you um in your packet was the October nineteen twenty twenty two meeting minutes. Did anyone have questions? Comments, concerns, changes?
Obviously.
Going, comment, missing. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. My comment very well taken. Thank you for doing this.
Very good. Okay, so can I have a, and Mr. Tippett, you're back on here.
I'm off because I can't approve them.
Oh, that's true. Sorry, sir. Okay. Can I have, can I have a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
I'll take a motion to.
I have a second for Mr. Bailey and a roll call vote to accept those meeting minutes. Starting with Mrs.
Cheryl Hawkins, I.
George Bailey.
And Tracy Hardikoff, I accept the written minutes. Any other business to come before the board at this time? Did I grossly miss anything?
I do have something. It's not necessarily related to zoning, but I wanted to let everybody know if you don't know already, on December tenth, we're gonna be having a community meeting. Um, at the E C L C, which is a Saturday, um, starting at eight thirty, allowing people in. We'll start the meeting from nine to twelve and it's in um. In relation to our, we're updating our master plan chapters for our land use and our um. Transportation chapter and that was um to get more community input um from the survey that I've gone on and just let everybody know that if you've, I hope everybody took the survey. But um we got over six hundred responses from the survey, which I feel is.
About seven percent.
But that's pretty good for.
Yeah. Based on, actually based on the number of adults living in this community, it's actually a reasonable term of information. Thank you for sharing.
So that's all I'd like to share with the board. Thank you.
I, any other uh business that needs to come before the board and if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
I.
Will be um Hardikoff, I will be adjourning this meeting at seven fifty eight P M. Thank you all for your hard work and your review of all the material in front of you. Very appreciated.
I hope, I hope the master planning.